Start again with my microphone. Good afternoon and welcome to the Finance Subcommittee. Thank you for attending this afternoon. Apologies for the late start there, just a few minutes behind there. Just before we go on, this meeting is up to the public and it's been webcast. We have received four questions from members of the public and a petition that's been referred from council, we'll be taking those today. Just housekeeping, can I request that all mobile phones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so as not disturb the conduct of the meeting? There's no fire test planned for today, so if there is emergency evacuation, please take instruction from the Tower Hall staff. The assembly point is Tudor Square. For the benefit of the webcast, I'll ask each Finance Subcommittee member in turn to introduce themselves. So if we start, Zahira.
Councilor Zahira Nas, co-chair of the Finance Subcommittee.
Q.
Marianne Elliott, Green councillor for Lidl's Valley.
Q.
Commissioner Murphy, West Ecclesley Ward.
Commissioner Mohamed Ecclesley Ward.
Commissioner Gelton, Don't Ollie.
I'm sorry, Chair.
Commissioner Mary Lee, Downham Ward.
Commissioner Mike, East Ecclesley Ward.
Commissioner Mike Chaplin, Council for Southie Ward.
Thank you. I noticed when a couple logged on there, we got different names that came up on the consoles, so just to avoid confusion, Councilor Zahira Nas is not Councilor Roger Davison, I'm not quite sure what's on on that there. So I think there's a couple of people that have got the wrong names on the consoles. Yeah, they're all sorted now. Okay, thank you. So next item, apologies for absence, oh sorry, the officers to introduce themselves.
Rachel Marshall, Principal Democratic Services Officer.
Thank you.
Eugene Walker, Executive Director, Resources.
Ryan Keyworth, Director of Finance and Commercial Services.
Gillian Duckworth, Director of Legal and Governance.
Thank you. We'll have a number of other officers that present to us as we go through. Next item is apologies for absence, do we have any apologies for absence? No, I think everybody's here. Item three, exclusion of press and public, there are no items listed for exclusion of the press and public. And so item four, any declarations of interest, whether any members wish to declare an interest in any of the business items on the agenda? No, can't see anybody's indicated there. Sorry, Commissioner Otten.
Yeah, on the crossing on Hanging Water Road, I'd like to declare an interest in that, it being my daughter's route to school, so I'll take advice on exactly how big an interest that is, but I intend not to take part in the discussion on that item.
I just need to declare that as personal interest, Commissioner Otten, you can still take part if you wish to.
So there's no backing out of it. Thank you. So item five is minutes of... Sorry.
Does that apply to 20 mile an hour zones? There's one on Deilands which will be in Southie Ward.
I wouldn't think that counts.
Not simply because you're a Ward councillor, no.
Okay, so move on to the minutes of the last meeting, which was held on the 27th of July. Someone propose them as a correct record? Councilor Nas, and seconded by Commissioner Lee. Any matters arising? Nope, nothing on that. Okay, so we'll move on to item six, which is public questions and petitions. We have a petition that's referred from council around pension divestment, and if you'd like to, I think, is it June that's wishing to speak? I think if you just come to this chair here and press the button. Thank you. Just, as explained, we have got a really full agenda, so if you can try and keep it to the point and succinct, we have... Thank you. If you press the button...
Okay. I'm June Cattell, I'm here, not representing myself today, but I'm here representing the Sheffield Campaign for Divestment from Companies Responsible for Human Rights Abuses in Palestine. And it was in the name of that organisation that a petition was sent to the council, which was presented by a few of us in July. Now, I've not been to one of these meetings before, so I'm not quite sure what the protocol is, but I'll do my best to stick to whatever the rules are. And I'm particularly referring to this document, which was the proposal that came out with the minutes for the Finance Subcommittee, because it raised, you know, a number of issues for us. I think the petition that we put forward did deal with pensions, but it dealt with a number of other issues as well. It dealt with human rights, international law and local democracy, all of which has impact on Sheffield citizens and on Sheffield council, obviously. So part of the reason for coming today is to say, well, this isn't just about pensions, this petition is about much wider issues, and we would like to make sure that all those issues are actually aired and given some discussion time with council, whether it's within this committee or within other council committees. I mean, one of them, for example, is the amendment to the pensions bill, which is linked to the boycott bill, which will be put forward before Parliament this session. And this is a bill that is prohibiting support for boycott actions, and it's really about silencing voices of people who might disagree with the government of the day. And this will have an impact not just on Palestine, but a whole range of other organisations with a human rights focus, or for instance, a climate focus as well. So this motion is also, it's about encouraging the council to take a view on that, because it is a very important, this is going to be a very important piece of legislation that has a major impact on the democratic rights for the citizens of Sheffield. The second, this motion is about human rights, international law and opposition to apartheid. I hope you'll agree that we all, as individuals, have a duty to respect international law and ensure that international laws are upheld, something that the present government hasn't always done, of course. But we also want to uphold our disagreement with any violations of international law. And I feel this council, you know, has a very good track record of doing the right thing in relation to international law. And we would like to see that enacted, particularly for ourselves, particularly in relation to Palestine. This council led the way on apartheid in South Africa, and it's also taken the incredibly important step of recognising Palestine. And so we hope that the council will be able to move forward recognising the apartheid that's taking place in Israel and the Palestinian territories, and do what it can to oppose those injustices. But on the issue of pensions, we agree with what's in this document, you cannot have any direct influence on how SYPA, South Yorkshire Pensions Authority, invest their money. But as you know, the council, like any other stakeholder, can have a view on what the pension authority does. Now, SYPA does have a fiduciary duty, and this doesn't just include maximising financial investments. Most businesses today recognise the importance of environmental, social and human rights issues in developing their investment strategy. And if you look at what the SYPA is working, it does have a human rights strategy. And so does the Border to Coast, which is the other organisation that SYPA invest through, it's a big investment collective, and also the Local Authority Pensions Funds Forum, they also have a range of distinct views on what is good investment. And that good investment looks at a whole range of issues which in the longer term are going to affect our investments and our financial returns, such as climate, such as weapons, such, you know, a whole range of things, mining, this... If you look at their reports, you will see that it's not just about financial gain. And there's been a great increase in stakeholders expressing their views, which I hope we can continue to do, and I hope public bodies like yourself will continue to do. You have on the pensions board representatives, and their role is to monitor and challenge decisions that SYPA take, but I think they need to do that in a way that's informed by what you think as a council. And so that is, again, the reason why it's important to bring this. As I said, to start with, we're not sure the committee can cover all these issues, but we'd like you to help us develop a way forward with this. So I hope I've not spoken too long, but thank you for listening, and we will be pleased to hear your response.
I think just on this, the response was issued to the petition when it was presented to the full council meeting, it was referred to the Finance Committee for a response. I think just on this, we need to take a little bit more advice before we can issue a full response to you on these, respond to the points you've raised there. And so we'll arrange for a written response to come out to you. Just with regards to the trustees that are appointed by the council, they are trustees of the pension fund, and while the council can express an opinion, it is down to the trustees who make those decisions, as trustees of the fund there. So we just need to get a bit more legal advice, just to check on all these things, and we'll make sure we get a response out to you. But thank you for coming along with it and making the presentation today. The next, we have Andy Kershaw here, who has a number of questions that he submitted. Just for information, the deadline for receiving questions is normally prior to the weekend, it was Friday, but we've accepted them and put them forward today. We may not have answers to them today, Andy, but we'll get answers to you in a written response.
Sure, thank you, Mr Chairman, I'm very grateful for you accepting those questions on an urgent basis. I'm Andy Kershaw from the Save the Rose Garden Cafe campaign in Graves Park, and as of this morning, 8,000 people have signed a petition calling for action on the Graves Park building itself. It's 42 days since the Rose Garden Cafe was closed, following a survey which revealed the need for an urgent repairs, following years and years of neglect of this building by this council. There has been substantial willful neglect and corporate failure by this council, and every party is involved in this. Twelve staff have lost their jobs, and the community has lost a much-loved asset and community building, which played such a big part as being a social hub during the pandemic, and which, for individuals, the elderly and the lonely and socially isolated, along with walkers and dog walkers, has for almost 100 years played a key role. Now, we know that urgent decisions can be made if it involves something like the Eurovision Song Contest or the Heart of the City for the council's own priorities, and so why not community priorities? Is this new way of working the listening, caring, openness and transparency of this council just all rhetoric? Local people have offered to work with the council to raise funds and get an independent structural report done on this building, so that we can undertake fundraising to get these repairs done and to get this building open. And the questions I've got for you today are these, that over the last few years, and I've done a little tot up this morning, since 2016, I'll not go through the laundry list of things, but since 2016, over £470,000 has been spent on things like the Animal Park, the Norton Nursery, the Norton Lodge since 2016, and not a penny has been spent on repairs or maintenance of that building. Now, the council is in danger of being in breach of its statutory duty. One of the main duties of a trustee is to care for and maintain the assets of the charity, and it's signally failed to do this over not just 10 years, 20 years, but over the last 30 years. And so I asked the council to look at its duty as a trustee of Graves Park and ask itself why not a penny has been spent on that building over this period, and nearly half a million pounds has been spent on other priorities. So the questions I've got for you today, Mr Chairman, are what's the financial model for Graves Park, the charity itself? Who makes the decisions on the application and expenditure in the park? And who are the 11 staff quartered in the accounts as being supported by those revenues? Why has no revenue income from the cafe been spent on repairs and maintenance, bearing in mind in the last 14 years, the tenant has paid £350,000 in rent, and it's the only cafe in Sheffield where the council has a profit share in the business? So not only have you been getting rent, you've been getting a share of the profits, but none of it has been spent on repairs and maintenance. And I say this looking at Mr Walker in terms of resources, there are huge questions there. It's 42 days, and I would ask for some compassion and urgency on behalf of those 12 staff who've lost their jobs as a direct result of this. And I'm asking the committee to provide them with a compensatory sum to each member of staff, and also to take an urgent decision about a replacement, a temporary replacement building for that cafe in Graves Park. Now, Commissioner Fox, the leader of the council, told our campaign last week, no decisions have been made, and all decisions have to grind their way through these new wretched committees that you've set up. Now, I had had an email this morning from the Friends of Graves Park, who've received a decision by an officer, and the decision by the officer is that a temporary structure cannot be provided, and it is unworkable. Now, the council can't sit behind this facade that no decisions have been made, and it has to go through council. You have a mechanism in between these meetings to deal with urgent matters, and when it suits you for Eurovision or the Heart of the City, you can make urgent decisions. And so we're asking that you make an urgent decision on this, you bring forward proposals for a temporary replacement, proposals for repairing this cafe, and work with the community. 200 people attended a public meeting in the park we held over this issue, and 8,000 people have now signed the petition. So please, Mr Chairman, we ask for urgent decisions and urgent action, not least for the 12 staff who've lost their jobs as a result of this. Have some compassion, many of you are trade unionists in this room. Please go home tonight and think that 12 people have lost their job as a result of this activity. So I know you can't provide me with the answers to those questions, Mr Chairman, but I'll leave them with you, and if you can bribe us with the urgent answers that you most convenience, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for presenting those. As I say and explain, we will get written responses to you. I understand there is a response to a number of questions that you put through to the leader in a meeting, when we were in a meeting last week, we'll get through, but we'll make sure those are out. I don't know if you've received those yet, but we'll be getting those out to you, and we'll make sure the answers come out to these questions as well.
Do excuse us if we leave now.
Sorry?
Do excuse us if we leave now.
Yeah, yeah, by all means, by all means. No, no, you're going to have to sit here now and listen to the rest of the meeting. Likewise, ladies, if you wish to leave. Okay. Let me just give them a moment there. Thank you. So we'll move on to item seven, which is the Budget Monitoring and Financial Position for Month Four, and Ryan Keyworth is going to be presenting this. He's going to move centre stage.
My colleague Jane Willby's just making her way down the stairs from the Public Gallery. Perhaps I'll start while she finishes making her way down. So in front of the committee today... In front of the committee today is the Month Four Budget Monitoring Position Revenue and Capital for the council. The report shows a £21.7 million overspend, and that overspend now includes an estimate for the 2022/2023 pay award. Just to be clear on the status of that pay award, the trade unions made a claim some time ago, the employers have made a counter offer, and that offer is now being considered by the trade unions. For example, one trade union has a ballot that closes on the 31st of October, so it'll be a few months yet before we know the trade union's full response to the pay award, but we've done what we can to try and estimate what the impact of that pay award would be were the trade unions to, or were the trade unions to approve or accept the offer made by the employers. Thank you. So what we've got underlying this is a fundamentally similar position to previous months. The challenge for the council remains the timing and the implementation of budget implementation plans that were approved as part of the budget set at full council in March. As a reminder, we had £53 million of savings that were approved, and the council also approved £25 million of reserves to be used to cover the risk that savings were delivered late, later than expected, or that we struggled to deliver some of the savings. We knew we were taking some risks when we did this in delivering the budget. By reporting a £22 million forecast, full year overspend at this stage, what we're saying is that most of that £25 million of risk reserves that we put aside is now spoken for. As in previous months, really, the challenges remain similar. There's an enormous programme of change going on in adult health and social care, and there are some timing issues with that, in part caused by challenges in recruiting suitably qualified staff, and in part caused by the simple size of the task involved. So the challenge here, which I know my colleague, the director of Adult Social Care, is in the room today, that she's very much on with, is ensuring that those savings, that that change does get delivered, it's just taking a bit longer than we hoped it would when we originally set the budget. But again, that's one of the reasons why we put the reserves on one side, to deal with that particular timing risk. There's also a significant programme of savings in children's social services, and again, some timing issues with those savings linked to difficulties in recruiting staff. And we've also had some challenges with a couple of capital investment proposals which were built into the budget that we've had difficulty in getting to work. Essentially, some of the assumptions that we made at the time have proven not to be the case, some of the funding we hoped we'd get hasn't materialised. And thirdly, the recovery of backlog repairs in the housing service. So progress is being made, but what you see in this report are the financial consequences of delays essentially in turning properties around between one tenant leaving and another tenant moving in. Those delays cause a loss of rent, they cause, in some cases, temporary accommodation costs, they can cause council tax costs to be incurred by the HRA, and a raft of other things as well. So the action there really is to support that repairs and maintenance service to get the backlog of repairs down, and to get that turnover of council house stock moving through. The rest of the committees are broadly speaking, where they were previously, no major issues worthy of note. And the capital monitoring, which is attached as an appendix to this report, shows very little movement from month three. There's a capital approval as the next item, which my colleague, Demi Watkinson, will present. But the only material change really from month to month on the monitoring is the acceptance of a grant for Pounds Park from South Yorkshire Mayoral Combined Authority, which was approved at Strategy and Resources last week, if I remember correctly. That's all, Chair. Obviously happy to take any questions that you all members have.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Commissioner Otten.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Ryan, for the report. I just want to pig into the, on page 20, the worsening of the outturn position a little more carefully. I mean, you've said this is largely due to the pay, the proposed pay award, and you've said that obviously this isn't settled. I mean, how do I put this? As I understand it, the unions are balancing on whether to reject that pay award and presumably contemplate industrial action. So the actual award could end up being different to what it is, and we could, and/or we could be in a position where there is industrial action. Does that... I mean, difficult to put questions. I suppose the first question is, in the event that there was industrial action, although obviously it's not something we should try to avoid, does that itself have a budgetary impact, and is that positive or negative in terms of not having to pay wages while people are on strike, but also things, services not working, things going wrong, and other costs coming in on that?
So, yeah, the actual pay award could be different to what we've included here. The trade union submitted a claim for £2,000 on all spinal column points and a number of other measures. The employers have offered £1,925 per spinal column point and a very short list of other measures. In fact, I think it might be a one liner of other measures. So it's possible that we end up with a different settlement ultimately. If there is strike action, I think your question actually sets out the different parameters here. If there is strike action, then people who strike won't get paid, services won't get delivered. So while on the one hand, yeah, there might be a small saving over here, there's as likely as anything to be consequences somewhere else, but the fact that a service wasn't delivered when it should have been delivered, and we end up having to run to catch up.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that. I mean, so if most of this movement is due to the pay award and other areas that there is improvement, I mean, I don't know if you can prognosticate on movement of this 22 million figure in future months, are you now expecting it to improve? I mean, I'm not entirely clear. I think if you're saying better quality forecasting or a release of a one-off provision, those things feel a little bit like smoke and mirrors rather than genuine improvements. But, I mean, can you clarify, I'm expecting, you know, a positive direction and how much of this... I mean, am I right in thinking that releasing a one-off provision isn't a genuine improvement? It's a piece of accounting? How much, you know, can we dig under some of that and give us a picture that is more related to actual savings and progress on that?
I suppose, to be honest, Commissioner Otten, that's why I didn't dwell on some of this stuff in my initial presentation, because it's not really material to the point. Yeah, giving forecasts a good kick is always a good thing to do, and we do that from a final... Service areas produce their own forecasts, because they're the people who are closest to their business. As a finance team, we challenge forecasts from time to time, and we do that periodically and cyclically. We can't do it for every business unit, every month, we simply don't have a team big enough to do that. So giving a forecast a good prod and a good shake is always a good thing to do, and sometimes it yields a benefit, sometimes it goes the other way, frankly. A one-off provision is just that. The provision was taken for a specific purpose, that purpose is deemed no longer to be necessary, so we release it properly. It doesn't affect the underlying position, it's a one-off benefit, that's all it is. The challenge we've got is, if you look on page 20, just creeping over onto page 21, there's an analysis of the 21.7 million overspend, split between one-off savings, some trend issues, trend issues are not great, because they tend to roll off into future years, and they're things that need managing, and that budget implementation column. I need that budget implementation column to be a one-off set of issues as opposed to an ongoing set of issues. When we did the medium-term financial analysis a couple of months ago, which is a time when we took a very close look at this, we thought about half of those issues were going to be ongoing, and we built that into the medium-term financial analysis, and that formed part of the committee savings targets that committees are now developing proposals on, ahead of their meetings for the rest of this month. But it's that, that's the number I'm focused on, and it's really making sure that as many of those are one-off as possible and are just timing issues, so just late implementation, or where we've asked officers and members to find alternatives to a saving that proved not to be deliverable.
Commissioner Lee.
Yeah, my question's on page 21, it's under Education, Children and Families. And I know you spoke last time about the Health Service and refusing to contribute towards the budget. towards the budget, in what seems to me that we have a lot of very disabled children, and care must be shared, and I just wondered, is there no way we can push back on that one? That was one, you know, because I'm sure we're trying very hard, but can we try and look at maybe, I don't know what other areas are doing, they must have similar issues in other areas. And also, just a query really, it says, with failure to reduce staffing and increasing... So failure to reduce staffing, I'm not sure what that means. There's a plan to reduce staff, but we can't do that for some reason? In the last under it, yeah?
So I've just found exactly where you're reading. On health, it's difficult, is the straight answer. However, we are working as a group of officers at the moment to effectively develop a plan to work with health over the next few months, to see where we can get to on some of this. I'm not, we literally had a meeting, an officer meeting yesterday, to try and work through how we're going to try and tackle the challenge. The social care system works across artificial lines, to be quite honest, because at the one end, and you know Alexis knows this better than anybody, you've got almost a continuum from the acute hospital, Sheffield Teaching Hospital, through to social care, and discharge is the point at which the line is drawn, and it's how you manage the flow of costs and people through that cycle. Something fairly similar exists in the children's world really, so at what point does the responsibility for looking after someone and paying for it, in my world, fall on the NHS or the local authority? And those lines are drawn in different ways, in different places, and across the country it actually works in different ways as well, you know, there are different approaches. So we're exploring how we can work with the NHS to actually achieve what we all want, which is a smoother flow of people in and out of hospital, and to do that in a way that recognises where the responsibility for the money lies. That's part one, if you like, but opens up the proper conversation, which is part two, which is how do we prevent people going in hospital in the first place? So we're certainly not done with this. I think it's going to be difficult to achieve it this year financially, but we're certainly not giving up on that. Plans to reduce staffing. In one of the budget implementation plans in that service was a plan to increase the number of qualified social workers and reduce the number of business support staff. That's what that relates to, we're struggling to find the numbers of qualified social workers that we'd need to make that shift.
councillor Shephak Mohammed.
Thank you Chair. My question's around the housing committee, Ryan, so it's either page 29 or page 13 or 20, whichever one it is. Because in addition to the overspend that councillor Otten talked about, obviously the HRA account is showing a £13.4 million. And all mine, it's black and white, so I can't see the reds, but I'm sure on yours, Ryan, the red lights are flashing right across the page. And it really is a catalogue of interlinked problems that are coming together in a perfect storm. So we have a problem with housing repair that I'm sure we've flagged up elsewhere in the council many times, but that's now leading to a £7.2 million overspend. We've got vacant properties that we're losing income of £3 million in particular, but also those vacant properties are also costing us extra in terms of council tax loss and extra legal fees, so almost £7 million there in particular. And I think the question is, Ryan, when are we going to turn the corner? Because the vacancy rate or voids, as it's called, we should be aiming for about 1.8, the report says, but if the number provided before us today is, that's far higher, 3.5, so it's over 2%, twice the rate. So how are we going to get a grip of this? Because we may be all concentrating on the other council budget, but actually the HRA is just as important, and quite alarming to see that it's already £13.4 million overspent. So what's the plan to get these reds to be greens?
Thanks councillor Mohammed, you're absolutely right. So as a maintenance line in the report is showing £7.2 million above budget. Now, in many respects, that's because they're doing more work than they were budgeted to do, so that's the catch-up that you're starting to see coming through. But you're right, the issue here, the fundamental issue is around getting repairs to council houses done more quickly, and to reduce that 3.5% of voids down to something closer to the 1.8 that's the budgeted amount. So that's where our focus needs to be, and it's certainly where the focus of the service is. If we can achieve that, the rest of these reds, which are the numbers that don't have brackets around them, will naturally go green over time. They won't go green this year, it's already too late for that, but they will go green over time, and the run rate, in other words, the current month's position multiplied by 12, will improve as we get towards the end of the financial year. So that's what we're focusing on, it's about getting those repairs done. It will cost money to do those repairs, because we're catching up from a backlog, a significant backlog. But if we can do that, the rest of the numbers will come good, and then we'll be able to get the HRA back on an even keel. At the moment though, that's obviously where the focus of the service needs to be.
Thank you. councillor Mike Chaplin.
Thank you Chair, and thank you Ryan for your thoroughgoing report. Very sobering as always. I suppose my question's similar to councillor Lee's, but applied to adult social care. The forecast overspend of £12.4 million that you flag up on page 21, so I'm asking, with the work that's underway, to plan for additional resources to tackle the underlying issues, do you have a timescale for when that might bring this figure down, or more into a manageable level?
I'm conscious the director of the service is there, so I might just ask Alexis if she can comment.
Yeah, I think we are fortunate that she's here, if she wants...
While she makes her way up. I mean, the service, we put together a change programme for adult health and social care in actually the last financial year, with the explicit objective of trying to recover from the situation we found ourselves in in the pandemic, which was a significant number of people on very high cost packages in their homes, and generally a service that was in need, and I'm sure Alexis will speak for herself in a minute, but in need of some change, some transformation. That's an enormous task, you know, we look after thousands of people in the city, and this is our biggest budget outside of schools, which are devolved to a certain extent. There's some really good and important work going on here, but it's not worked to the time that the budget was set. But that's why we put £25 million on one side, to manage the savings. The savings target in adult health and social care was huge, it's just taking a bit of time. Do you want to...
If I give you that, that might be a bit easier. Thank you, very handy us here today. Thank you very much, some director of adult health and social care, that's Alexis Chapel. And Ryan's attica really well, we have a detailed report that's actually going to the adult social care policy committee on 21st of September, which outlines two things, is the current forecast and the activities underway to bring the spend back to appropriate levels, and secondly, the proposals for 2324. And what we have undertaken with adult social care is taken a really robust approach to forecasting, because my take on it when it came into post is that what had happened in the past was that the forecasting wasn't as robust, so what was happening was that come to the last quarter, that's when the overspend would be seen. So essentially, what we've tried to do is really work in partnership with finance colleagues to really take that robust approach from the very, very outset. So that means you're seeing this now, but that's just plain absolute due diligence, so that what we can do is put in place alternative mitigations where we see we're not going to deliver as we thought we would do within timescales. So at the moment, what we have is planned for 600 reviews to be completed between now and the end of March. We've got a programme of work to reduce direct awards, which will bring reduced expenditure by about £1 million, but also fundamentally improve continuity of care for individuals. We've also got a programme of work to address overspends in relation to how we purchase care and how we also inefficiencies that have been within the system as well. So there's a huge and robust programme of work, and as Ryan says, is the key challenge for adult social care is that it's the scale of the challenge within the timescale to do it, and that's why we've worked really closely in partnership with finance colleagues, but also with colleagues across commercial services and procurement services, to look at recommissioning most of our activity over this year, plus also undertake the work that's been required to right-size support, but fundamentally, and I have to say this, director of adult social care, is improve the quality and experience and outcomes for the people of Sheffield, which is also really, really important in that balance and act that we're trying to strive.
Thank you for fleshing that out Alexis. If I can just make one comment, because as councillors we do pick up casework, where you have a frail elderly person who knows that they're not going to cope in the home, having social workers urge them to stay at home with a fairly intensive care package, when really that person would rather go into residential accommodation, because they know that, you know, they know deep down that they cannot really cope. I do feel that people's wishes should be listened to, particularly when those of the elderly who do not suffer with dementia or related mental issues. Thank you.
Thank you. I completely agree with you, and one of the key changes that we've really made over the last year or so has been around that move towards strength-based and, you know, outcome-focused practice. And for me, that's really about exactly that, listening to the wishes and views of individuals, because this is exactly the same question came up actually with adult social care policy committee last year, very much based on, you know, experiences for so many people that I spoke to coming into post, but also from members, that it was about how are we ensuring that people's views and wishes are being taken into account? Because for some people, residential care is absolutely the option, and, you know, and I think what really is the key thing was that shift and recognising that for me, it's not one size, it's about really what is right for that individual, and that's what counts. And particularly, you know, different people have different stages of the journey, you know, and some point, you know, living in community and might be absolutely at one point, but through the process of reviews and some of the changes that we're taking forward, it's important that we continue to review and have ongoing conversations, so that as people change and their journey changes, that we're able to be responsive to that. And that's a lot of the work that's going behind our practice changes, but also recommissioning changes that we're taking on board, so that we can be really responsive to people's changing journeys and needs and outcomes. But crucial to that, and absolutely central to that, is people's views and wishes as we go forward, and so it is the scale of the challenge within the timescale. But equally, you know, what's been really important at the heart of it is that we have kept a focus on what's right from the point of view of people, and family members and carers, because that's what really matters at the end of the day.
Thank you. Is anybody else? No, Mary, councillor Lee.
And it's just a comment really, with regards to the extra staff needed to carrying out the reassessment of the care packages. And I think I've mentioned this before, but the council needs to offer good and secure employment to people, and I think relationships between employers and employees built on mutual trust and confidence are really imperative to any good organisation, and it's better for the clients as well. You know, employing agency staff just isn't cost-effective. So I am just really reassured to know that there is a robust plan for recruitment in place, so thank you for that. And it would be really good to see us moving away from using agencies for those reasons.
So I think it's probably been quite helpful. So thank you very much for that. And I agree completely, one of the key things around our change programme has been to improve our workforce offer, and to gain stability in the longer term for our workforce, and that's both internally within the council, but also the wider kind of sector across adult social care, and that's absolutely been core to our kind of change programme. Actually, at the moment, we are going through a process of consultation and engagement with unions and staff about how we improve our offer in terms of learning and workforce development, but also career progression routes, and also the offer to stay, so that we get the continuity of practice and continuity. But fundamentally, we could recruit social workers to come and work for Sheffield, and say this is a good place to work, because that's what we want to do. The reason why I say that is because what's going to happen over the next year is there's going to be the social care charging reforms, which will come in place, and which we will absolutely increase the number of older adults that we are working with. So what's really important is that we're able to recruit the social workers to go and support the increased number of older adults that we'll have to work with in the city. So core to this has been about value basis and working very much in a very different kind of way, so that's the key kind of exciting pieces of work. And if anybody would like to find out more, we're absolutely welcome to go in now, to come and have a further conversation about that with us. Yeah, I'd appreciate that, thank you. Cheers Alexis.
Anybody else wish to ask any questions or make any comments? Okay, I will use a chair prerogative here. We have a recommendation in front of us to note the financial position at the end of month four, but I'd like to propose an amendment to this as well, that faced with the current situation, and notwithstanding the comments that have just made about recruiting social workers and things, we have a number of staff that are now acting in interim posts, and what I'd like to propose and put to the committee as an amendment, that we implement a freeze on recruitment to positions over £100,000, while we concentrate and focus attention on to the budget as it stands at the moment. We can see what the position is at the moment, and the current overspend, and we have a number of interim officers that are working in those posts now, that we've now appointed to those posts. And while the focus, while we're looking at working to introduce the changes and things in there, it's responding to comments and concerns from members of the public about where we are spending money on things, from employees through the union representatives that say, that talk about recruitment in there. So I'm proposing that we introduce a recruitment freeze on positions that are over £100,000. If there's someone that... Sorry.
I'm just a bit concerned about that, because you don't have that within your report, and therefore you haven't got all the implications that are attached to that. So can I suggest that you ask the chief exec to look at implementing, and then we can make sure that we've got all of the implications around that, so that the decision's made properly?
By all means, you know, it's the wording, the gist of what we're suggesting there. Is there someone that would... Is anyone to second that? councillor Mohammed.
Can I speak to this Chair? I mean, obviously, it's the first that's come before us. Secondly, I'm aware at least two very senior posts that are either currently vacant or soon to be vacant, and if you want to drive through change, make some decisions, particularly the children's services area, I'm not sure we're going to do that if the people are doing it, or they're on an essence of temporary basis, unless you're saying this freeze is going to be for the next five, 10 years, which I doubt. So I prefer a more case-by-case thing, rather than just a blanket salary, because some of these roles, or at least one maybe, will be statutory. I'm just concerned that we've had no foresight, no previous documentation around this issue, and today we've just been asked to make this decision, and I'd like to know what the consequences of it will be before I would vote for it Chair. I don't know if what other colleagues from Green Party think, or anyone else, but that's my view anyway.
Thank you. The statutory positions, we have got these, we have got position, people are taking up the interim posts, and the two statutory positions that we are in the position there, so in the director of leave and governance, and also in the children, director of children's services. So we have got those covered with the interim posts. councillor Otten.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, okay, Councillor Mahoney, I, I'm a little puzzled that this is the way that we're operating, without any prior notice of the proposal and obviously details of the, the implications. I'm, I'm kind of wondering now what I might drop on the committee at Wasten Street scene, in terms of significant kind of policy changes as an amendment to a report that I can reasonably get away with. So it strikes me that, that, and, and the figure of 100,000, feels like it's targeted at two specific posts that we're saying strategically don't need to be filled by the council. There's a saving to be had if we don't fill those posts. I don't know where the 100,000 has come from. Maybe it's 50,000, you know, maybe, maybe, maybe people lower down the chain, don't, positions don't, don't, don't need to be filled. I'm just, you know, I'm not happy with the way this has been, been brought up and been, been, been proposed. Now, it may well be that the, you know, the organisation is top-heavy, and we could have a, you know, a sensible kind of HR strategy, which involves a thinner top of the structure, and that could save a great deal of money. And I've argued this for many years. To do this via recruitment freezes, that is just dropped on a committee like this with, with no notice and no opportunity to consider, I think is not the, not the way to do it.
Councillor Leveray.
Yes, I agree with this. It's, it's difficult to understand. We haven't had anything presented to us at all on any financial benefits from any manpower reduction processes or anything like this. To get something just dropped on us with an arbitrary 100,000 pound number just doesn't make sense. It needs to put it in context, so we understand what it's about before we can make decisions like this. Thank you.
Councillor Chaplin.
Thank you, Chair. I do find this interesting line of reasoning from the, the Liberal Democrats here, who have been telling everyone, anyone who will listen, that Sheffield City Council does have a dire financial position, that they've not even considered this, or even thought of bringing this along themselves. And to say it all now, you know, we've not given this any thought, and this is all too hasty, I think is stretching it, quite frankly. I will be supporting this motion, Chair.
For, just for, for clarity, if nobody else has indicated, in line with the advice given by the Director of Legal and Governance, that we asked the city, the, the chief exec to produce a report to look at that, to, to, to give us the, the implications, I can't remember the wording you said there, Gillian.
It was just to ask the chief executive to look at the possibility of implementing a freeze on recruitment for all roles over 100,000.
Yeah. And clearly, as I indicated at the start, in the current financial position that we find ourselves, the current budget, it's during this current budget period while we're looking at this. This is not something that we're talking about a five or 10-year freeze. And it's not, as, as councillor Otten, just for clarity, it's not saying that the posts don't need to be filled, because there are actually people working in those posts, in interim posts at the moment. Okay, so the proposal has been put forward there. Can we take, can we show, a show of hands? Councillor Otten.
Chair, can I, can I suggest 50,000 as a figure for, if, if it's going, if just were going to be considered, then there's a huge amount more money to be saved, I would have thought, in the 50,000, 100,000 bracket, which will be a large number of posts, than in the, you know, we're spending a lot of time discussing saving possibly of two salaries, when we could be saving more. If, if it's going to be considered, the chief executive is going to give suggestions, I think the figure of 50,000 would be more appropriate than 100. And that's not to prejudge what we make of the proposal when it comes back to us.
Is that a further amendment on 50,000? You're, you're suggesting a further amendment, then, to a freeze on recruitment over 50,000?
That's not personal, yeah. Thank you.
Don't appear to have anybody who's seconded that, councillor Otten. Okay, so if we move to the proposals that have been forward, forward and seconded, are people in agreement?
A show of hands.
Those against? Okay, that's not carried. So the amendment as it stands is that the council challenging financial position at the end of July 22, month four, is noted. Are we all in agreement with that? Okay, thank you. So move on to item eight, capital approvals for month three and four. And Damien is presenting, and Ryan is on standby as well, I understand. I think Damien's capable on his own, is he? Over to you, Damien.
Thanks very much, yeah. I'm Damien Watkinson. I'm the finance manager for the capital team, just here to present the additions and variations to the capital programme that have come through the capital approvals process in months three and four. Just because we had a strategy resources meeting, had a full agenda, so we didn't bring everything that came through the, the process in month three to that meeting. So that's why you've got two appendices here today. They both carry the same information, it's just that one refers to July, and one refers to August. So I intend to sort of speak about them together. I'm not going to go through each one in detail. Some of the members have had a chance to look at those papers. Just to summarise briefly, under transport regeneration and climate change, most of that's made up by transport schemes in these past couple, couple of months. So there's been several accessibility schemes brought forward, improving pedestrian access to various areas, a continuation of the 20 mile an hour zones, so some of those coming forward for outline business case stage, so going out to, to final design stages and increasing the budgets to be able to deliver those. There's a couple of parking schemes, more work being done on the one at Park Hill, and, and introducing a small scheme of West, sorry, West Bar, not West Bar, sorry, around West Street, where we're going to use a piece of land for some interim parking. The support for cycling, we've got some cycle, a pilot of a cycle storage scheme that's been brought forward, which will be, provide on-street cycle, secure cycle parking for people to use. So that's going to be a pilot for that. And also a continuation of our cycle support infrastructure scheme, which is installing improvements along the cycling network, such as, you know, installing, removal of barriers, changing to, changes to rights of way that just helps the flow of cycling traffic. Also, there's been the, the final stage of the clean air zone, so we're just adjusting the budgets of those, following the approval of the final business case by the Joint Air Quality Unit. So we're just realigning the clean air zone budgets to those final costings. And also just bringing up the Transforming Cities, City Centre Scheme into its last design stage, so just uplifting that budget to the award we've got from the combined authority to engage a contractor to work on that final, final stage of design for us. Then, under housing, we've just got a couple of schemes where we've got CCTV upgrade across the estate to meet some statutory duties, but also just to, to upgrade what we've got. And some feasibility work on fire safety around the bin storage we have in flats, you know, multiple occupancy flats. So just looking at that as part of the fire safety strategies. There's also been quite a bit of reprofiling work done across the allocations we have in, where we've not got schemes as such, but we've got several, you know, broad allocations. So for instance, for health and safety, for external works, reprofiling those budgets where we don't think they're going to get drawn down this year, and moving them out a few years of the programme. And that's as part of the work that's currently being done on the revised HRA business plan, looking at smoothing that investment. And particularly some of that around the stock increase programme as well. So some of that has been moved along to, to smooth that process of, of, of delivery. And then, under education, we've got, yeah, we have, we're investing in the fabric of several schools, so Waterthorpe, Carfield, Limpseyfield and Mozbrook, there's work on roofing, particularly windows, doors, that extend, external envelope of schemes. And that's been a series of structural surveys that, you know, a rolling, a rolling programme, those that are done across school estate. And that's where we've been identifying those most in need of, of repair. So those four schools are the next on the conveyor belt, if you like, of our programme to, to improve that estate. And then finally, several times, we've, we've spoken in various forums about the increase in the places, the South West Schools. So King Egberts, we're just increasing the budget by that for 700, by 700k, so that's going up just to over 6 million now for the additional places there. We're finding, again, it's ground conditions, when further, you know, further digging's being done, are not as favourable as had been hoped. But also it's, it's inflation that they're seeing, particularly in the cost of steel that's caused that one. So that's just increased that cost. The good, the good part about, so the good part about that, the reassuring part is that we do have further funding from central government to cover that now. So where previously we had been looking that we might need to put our own resources into that, there's been further announcement of government funding to pick that up. So it's not impacting directly on our own resources at this point. They're the major areas. So I think, any questions?
Okay, thank you. Councillor Mahoney, you indicate first.
I, I have a question and, and obviously comments. It says page 50 of my pack, Damien, but it's...
I'll see what I can find.
It's Castle, the Castle site. So 94077 Leveling Up Fund-Castle Site. Basically the old Castle markets.
Oh, Castle site, yeah.
Yep. So it's an extra 224,000 pounds. Obviously fantastic news that we've got extra money to not just, you know, do the dig, but also site investigations, et cetera. The, the genuine question is when, is this money, when, when is the work, this extra work going to start? Or does it just carry on?
So the, this is part of Leveling Up Fund, which you will see business cases for this coming through month on month now. So this is the initial stage. So we, I can't remember the initial amount that we put in, so increased by 224. So, yes, there was roughly around 230 already in there to start this work off. So this work will be progressing now, and hopefully, this is, it's the, it's the outcomes of this that will lead to further business cases coming through. So I believe it's around, I think it's around 15 million in total for, for the Castle Gate area that's going to come from the Leveling Up Fund. This is just that initial work to, you know, scope out exactly what it is we're going to deliver there and, and make sure, you know, that, that the Castle site particularly, with the archaeological importance of it, we work correctly around that.
Okay. And then the other comment, Chair, is just, just welcoming that Abbey Lane accessibility. I've been on that site with my colleague, Councillor Masters, walked the site, and people have struggled to cross that road. So those kind of refuges in the middle of the road, which is what this will fund, will be greatly welcomed. And I just look forward to you progressing it as quickly as possible, because I'm sure many people this summer would have appreciated a safer crossing route between the two bits of Ecclesall Ward. So, thank you.
Councillor Leveray.
Thanks, Chair. Page 37, Damien, the comment on the current year-to-date forecast outturn. You said we'll have the increase in funding, we've got some good money, which has led to the 35.2 million below budget at this stage. Are we going to hit that target in terms of delivery, first of all? And secondly, in terms of construction costs, we're obviously seeing an increase, I'm sure. Do we know, have we got a scale of increase that we're seeing at the moment in terms of cost of construction? And the next question is, with the energy cost issues coming along, are we keeping close track of the impact on construction costs and whether the government are going to continue to fund us to deal with this challenge? Thank you.
Firstly, on the outturn position you're about. So at month four, we were, they were forecasting a 266 million total outturn. No, I don't think we're going to hit that. And, and further that report, you know, the forecasting is not bearing eye at the moment. So we have asked for a piece of work to be done for people to look at those forecasts, because actual spend's not keeping up with what they're currently forecasting. It, it's going to take a massive lift off in our spending to be able to deliver that. So, no, there's, and like Ryan was saying earlier about revenue, giving the forecast a shake is what we're doing this month, to get people perhaps aligned those budgets a bit more. We know there's been some issues, you know, on-site on Hartle City, and they may be able to catch up. But I'm just asking people to have a really good look at those this month, because actually, I do think we'll outturn closer to 210, 220. Just historically, you know, there's just only so much we can deliver. So that's probably my comment on that. And what I intend to do, hopefully, is bring those budget realignments through in the next couple of months. So people look at the forecast this month, revise them, and then we bring the budget adjustments through that realign the programme, so that we're monitoring against something more robust. So that's on that one. In terms of cost of construction, I mean, it is really my colleagues in Capital Delivery Service that are at the sharp end of that, because they're the ones who review the tenders and see things. But, you know, I, I pick that up when things like King Egbert's come through. So yes, we are seeing those costs in steel. And somebody was talking about 20% inflation in steel, it could be more, you know, and that's, that is continuing. So there, people are, when new schemes are coming forward, particularly building in increased contingencies, if you like, for inflation. And I know, like I said, my colleagues in Capital Delivery Service particularly keep an eye on that. So I can ask them if, you know, they can produce something, you know, a bit of a position statement on it, you know, just to see what, how tenders are coming through now. But yeah, you'll be seeing, and you will have seen in the past couple of months, me bringing through increasing in schemes where you go out to tender at one finger, but it's coming back a lot higher. So yeah, we are keeping an eye on that. And I don't know if there's going to be any further support, to be quite honest, in terms of government grants, particularly for that. A lot of our capital programme, for instance, like the, particularly the transport that comes through is, is mostly grant funded, mostly from the MCA, or local transport plan funding. And it doesn't appear to be linked in that way. So I'm not aware of anything particularly. It's just going to be a case of us making more robust cost, you know, just building in more effectively for inflation when we're going out to tenders, hoping that we, we've got enough to cover those schemes and we're not having to come back later and, and pull drawdown more funding, you know, so that we can plan better effectively.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any questions or comments? No, I'd just like to add a couple of comments on there. The, the 20 mile an hour schemes are great, see them rolling out and continuing across there, and across both appendices. There are a number of schemes in there, and it's something that we all really need to get behind in looking at trying to improve road safety, particularly around, you know, children when they're around the school zones and things like that as well, and elderly people. And as, as Councillor Mahoney said, Abbey Lane, I've used that number of times crossing there with my granddaughter and going across, and I welcome seeing that scheme coming in. It makes it a lot easier and a lot safer crossing there. So yeah, great that that's coming through. And I think there are a number of, a number of other schemes that are in here around accessibility that talk around Burton Street and things like that, which it just shows a continued commitment, even though we have got issues and revenue, the revenue budget is, is really difficult at the moment. But we can still make these improvements and the capital investment across the city to improve in accessibility and safety that's across there. So thank you for that. So we have a recommendation, it's on page 42, and the recommendation is, it says, somewhere I find it, we approve the proposed additions and variations to the capital programme listed in appendix one and two. Is everybody in agreement with that? Yeah, okay, thank you. Thank you, Damien. So we move on to the next item on the agenda is item nine, the Sheffield City Region Urban Development Fund, the Jessica Fund. And Ben is here to, to present this for us.
Thank you, Chair. Ben Morley, head of programmes, council body, part of City Futures. This paper is, too far, want to provide an update of the SCR Jessica Fund, which was established 10 years ago through the council, acting as accountable body on behalf of all the South Yorkshire and at that point Sheffield City Region local authorities, to create a commercial property fund to provide loans for commercial property development across, across the region. And secondly, subject to approval, retaining the funding which was put into the fund initially 10 years ago for a further 10 years, and also broaden the investment opportunities for the fund. The report provides a, a brief summary update of, of performance of the fund to date, which has seen over, over 60 million pounds invested in, in local property developments across the region. All those which have been completed have seen All those which have been completed have seen funding return of interest and recycled. So from the original twenty-three million invested through European Funding and Growing Places Fund, it seemed three times that amount of money invested in supporting economic development in the region. And that's over a million square feet of floor space across all the different local authorities in the area. The fund was originally set up for ten years and that date is coming up next year. And we've approached government through the Department of Leveling Up to request that their original investment, fifteen million, which is now near eighteen million, is retained for use for the fund within the region, which they are agreeable to. And this report also seeks confirmation of the investment via Growing Places Fund into the Jessica Fund is also retained for a further ten years. Along with that will be the expansion of the investment strategy, which sits alongside the funding, saying what can and can't be invested in. As has happened to now, it's been largely commercial property with the ability to invest in renewable projects. What we're seeking today is the ability for the fund to also pick up leisure, retail and residential development. The Department of Leveling Up have agreed to that already. So this is just hopefully confirmation for the council to do likewise. Alongside the outside of councils processes will be the reappointment of the fund manager for a further ten years. And that process I hope to see starting shortly. And also to highlight that actually the fund is a vehicle potentially for other investments. So we will be in discussion with the command authority to see what they might be able to bring forward. And also discussions with government, Department of Leveling Up, to see whether potentially there's opportunity for them to invest in the region through the Jessica Fund as well, given its success to date. That's pretty much the proposal. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Councillor Chappell.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you for this report. And I certainly welcome the continued, continued use of this fund to invest in the South Yorkshire region. It seems to me that Sheffield, Rotherham and Barnsley have been making quite extensive use of this fund. Doncaster less so, apart from the Robin Hood Airport. But we've also given, given a sum to Chesterfield as well. So I was just wondering how that fitted into the strategy.
When the fund was originally set up, it covered both South Yorkshire and beyond that, the whole Sheffield City Region. And as a result, schemes in that part of the world have benefited. Going forward, it's just going to be South Yorkshire.
Any further questions? Councillor Otten.
Thank you, Chair. If I was the head of Councillor, I'd have you to go. So the question, I suppose the question is, in terms of investment strategy, to what extent is this a kind of, how do I put this, policy-neutral approach that simply seeks to seek investments that are in line with this kind of stated objectives? And whether, or whether this is a tool that can be used for, you know, investments that the member councils might want to, might want to make? I mean, the thing that immediately comes to mind is a cafe in a particular park that might want some money spending on it. Is that the sort of thing that this sort of fund, A, could and B, ought to be used to draw down?
The broadening of the investment strategy would enable that type of investment. At the moment, it wouldn't be because it's retail stroke leisure. The issue for the fund is it does work at a much larger scale. So up until now, investments have generally been a million pounds as a loan investment, partly to justify the costs of running a fund of this scale. So smaller investments, which I hope that scheme is, it wouldn't necessarily be appropriate. But if there is something similar appropriate scale, which whether members, officers, developers mainly, have an interest in bringing forward, then that's really what the fund is there for, to consider potential investments which bring benefit to the region.
Thank you. Councillor Elliott.
And so at one, one, two, three, it refers to low-carbon energy projects. So, you know, the fund is clearly intended to support such projects. But then at four, 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 it says there's been no approaches for that, for those purposes. I mean, it seems to me that it is an ideal scheme that businesses could use to sort of invest, you know, in order to cut costs through improving energy efficiency. Do you, do you know why there hasn't been any approaches? Do you think it could be promoted more for those reasons?
I think the focus until this point has been about energy generation, so renewable energy schemes. And over the past ten years, there has been, there has been limited, very limited interest through this type of finance, partly because of the terms, the nature of the fund is for a fairly quick turnaround and recycle the funding and renewable energy projects by the nature of long-term investments. I would point to a similar scheme set up in Manchester, and they have really struggled as well to find investments. But likewise, there are commercial funds, there's commercial funding out there, which, if it's a sound deal, might be more likely to invest in than potentially this funding, which is much more about construction related. What we have been looking at in terms of the fund and its potential is for particularly offices, existing offices, who will need to upgrade to meet the new environmental energy performance certificate rating to be lettable B or above. Then that might be something where the fund could be involved if it's part of a larger scale refurbishment. And there is one scheme we're in detailed conversation with at the moment where its environmental performance is really poor. And potentially through a loan from the fund, it will see a refurbishment, but also that increase in energy performance up to acceptable standard.
So is it largely because of the repayment terms then, do you think?
It's partly repayment terms, but also the nature of the sector. The fund hasn't actively, I would say, pushed the renewable energy element. It was a small part of European funding. It almost crept in as part of the original setup of the fund, which is very much about commercial property. As I say, if there's good ideas out there, then the fund is able to consider them.
But it's not been particularly promoted for that?
Not actively promoted because we haven't seen the demand for it. You know, if two go together, then it's...
Thank you.
Nobody else seems to have indicated. So if there's no further questions, the, we have three recommendations on page seventy-six of your report there. Is everybody in agreement with those? Yeah, should we take those? Yeah. Thank you. So moving on to the next item on the agenda is item ten, which is on page eighty-seven of the pack and is the project feasibility fund. And Ben, you're presenting on that as well.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Hopefully a relatively straightforward report to accept some funding from the combined authority, SIMCA, in relation to the establishment of a project feasibility fund. As you may be aware, a lot of our projects can only get funding from SIMCA once we've developed a business case, which can take years to develop and significant costs to do so, both in terms of officer time, consultants, feasibility studies, site investigations, et cetera. And we can see from the capital programme in SIMCA, for example, this year, they're looking at a significant underspend in their capital, partly because us, together with the other local authorities in the region, haven't been able to bring forward as many projects as we have hoped. So in light of that position, the combined authority has agreed to set up funding for each of the local authorities, which for Sheffield is six point six million over the next three and a half years, to enable us to develop ideas, strategies, concepts, turn them into projects, and then to develop business cases which can then be submitted for funding, majority of which will probably go to the combined authority, but potentially drawing in other funding as well, including private sector funding. It will be coming to us as revenue, which is obviously where we struggle the most to undertake this activity. Potentially, if some of those projects turn into capital, we will see the funding recycled back into the council. So it's not six point six million. And potentially it can be recycled for a bit more. And then inevitably we'll no doubt go back to the combined authority to ask for further funding at that point. The grant conditions are straightforward and set out in the report. There's nothing unusual within the funding. It comes as a real need and meets a particular hole at this moment in time in discussions about the budget earlier. Really highlights the value of this to the council going forward.
Thank you, Ben. Any questions? Any comments? There are recommendations there on page eighty-eight that will be entered in the funded agreement. They accept the six point six million grant. Are we all in agreement with that?
Agreed.
Agreed. Okay, thank you. That's carried. So the next item on the agenda is item eleven on page ninety-five of your pack, which is the leisure investment update. And Tammy Barris is presenting on this.
Thank you. I'm Tammy Barris. I'm head of sport, leisure and health at the city council. The report provides an update actually on a decision that was taken previously in November twenty-one by the co-op executive. So the report provides details of maintenance work, which was outlined within the leisure investment facility report. That report approved investments of in excess of a hundred million over the life of the agreed leisure investment strategy. Because of the sums involved, we wanted to provide a more detailed report today in line with the outcomes of the strategy. The report provides an update on the schedule of works that have been undertaken today and also provides proposed works and lifecycle improvements through to 2024. The sums involved include a contingency of fifteen percent, and that's to cover any uncertainty over construction prices, rising inflation, and also any sort of unforeseen failures that might arise between now and 2024. The report actually asks for an additional drawdown of nine point three million, and that will support the next tranche of work across the leisure estate. There is a table within the report that details the investment at each facility. I don't propose to go through that in detail, but we'll ask questions if anyone has them at the end. This will bring the total programme of work to nineteen point two million, and that should ensure that the facilities are brought up to a reasonable standard prior to transfer to a new operator in 2024. The council's capital delivery service has been working closely with Sheffield City Trust in order to develop a programme of work and ensure that the essential maintenance and lifecycle replacement tasks are completed in readiness and prior to 2024. I think it's important to note that within the original report, there are plans to rebuild a number of sites. So Springs Leisure Centre, Concorde Leisure Centre and Hillsborough are on the redevelopment list. Therefore, maintenance spend at those venues have been kept at a minimum and only essential investments are included. Spend at Hillsborough, which might stand out within the report, is predominantly related to replacement of pool plant and roof repairs. And that work's essential to ensure that the venue remains accessible until plans to rebuild and redevelop that site in and around 2030. It's important to highlight that some of the work, particularly at Hillsborough Leisure Centre, Ponds Forge and the Arena, will require closure of the facilities for some of the works to be undertaken. Any closures will be planned well in advance, will only impact areas that are being worked upon. So it might be that dry side can remain open, for example, whilst wet side is being worked on. And any closures will be planned to make sure that disruption is minimised to users of the facilities, but also that any impact on income from those sites is kept to a minimum. Members are asked to know the content of the report and to approve the next tranche of funding in line with the outcomes of the leisure review. I think it's also just important to flag that in the original report, there was investment proposed for Uppertop Healthy Living Centre. That investment is still proposed, but will be subject to a further report that will be brought forward with the detail for that particular phase of investment. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. Mike's indicated. Councillor Leverry.
Thanks, Chair. Thanks, Tammy, for this detailed report, a very important report. I noticed essential maintenance and lifecycle cost replacement, which is, that together with the capital build means that there's a difference of about twenty-five million in terms of what the over a hundred million pound commitment was. Is that twenty-five million, which I think was originally targeted for capital replacement? How is that being dealt with going forward? Thank you.
Okay, I think what you're referring to, Mike, is a level of investment that was planned between now and 2028, actually. Because I think what we recognised is we can't deal with everything all at once. So we need a phased programme of investment over a period of time. So this gives us the investment up to 2024. There's then further lifecycle replacement that we know needs doing, ongoing throughout the whole estate for the lifetime of the business case. So I think what you're referring to is that element of funding. And that will be brought forward in due course. What we don't know at this stage is whether we will continue to bring forward reports of this nature or whether we'll wrap that up into the procurement of a new operator and put the lifecycle maintenance into the costings of part of the new contract. That's still to be determined. But there is a recognition that there is a further tranche of work beyond what's in this current report.
Okay, Mike. Councillor Otten.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom, for the report. I, I'm sorry, I appreciate the work that's gone into this and I, you know, I'm supportive of it. I'm just slightly, I'll be slightly at a loss for the member of the public who says to me, why you, you know, why you're just turning off streetlights to save a hundred thousand pounds maybe, putting people at risk when you can spend a hundred million pounds on leisure facilities? Now, I appreciate that, you know, that those numbers are not coming from the same place and are not directly comparable. But it's, it's going to be difficult, isn't it, for us to explain the severity of our revenue budget position when we're also talking about spending a hundred million pounds? I won't say unnecessarily. I think it is necessary. But, but it might feel like that's not a necessary thing to do. And I suppose the corollary to that question is, does this capital investment put us in a position that, that spares us an ongoing revenue cost? Are these facilities going to effectively pay for themselves from the fees of people going and going through the doors and so on? Or, you know, are we mindful of the effect on the revenue position of this capital investment? And are we seeking to, to, you know, make that a positive?
Thank you, Councillor Otten. I think the two things go together actually hand in hand. So if you put the investment into the facilities and into the capital development, in the longer term, you will increase participation and increase revenue on the revenue side of things. What we do know is these facilities need investment and we need to get this estate into a stable footing. What we've looked at is a long-term investor save model. So there's an impact upfront of investing in the facilities. Over time, over that thirty-year period, you know, obviously we've got the upfront capital investment, but the expectation based on the business modelling that we did is that over that longer term period of time, we will save money based on what we're currently spending on this estate at the moment. And they'll return an investment back to the council. But we can't turn that around without having a pretty significant level of investment upfront. So that's what this programme of work is all about.
Councillor Lee.
Yeah, thank you, Tammy, for bringing this. You've not got anything against Concorde and Spring, yeah, those two. So is that because they're going to be replaced first? That's fine. And I just want you to comment, really, you know, this investment is not just about facilities and people who go and play a bit of sport. It's about the health and wellbeing of the whole city. It's about working with the health service, it's about social prescribing, and it's about having a facility in every area so everybody in every area can benefit from these great facilities and the ones that are planned for the future. I think it also shows that Sheffield, as always in this particular area with the sporting bodies, that Sheffield can do business, and people welcome that, and we have got a good reputation. And I think the reputation is well deserved, and I think will only continue to be well deserved because of the investments we're going to do. We're going to be putting into these areas, these sporting facilities, over the next 10 years. And obviously, these are essential maintenance that we need to do to make sure that, you know, that the health and safety checks and all those issues are maintained and people can continue to enjoy the facilities until they are replaced, especially the ones that are being replaced. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. I think that was just a, that was not a question there, that was a comment there. Councillor Roof.
Thank you, Chair. Just a comment and a question. I mean, I think it's great to see all this work going on with these leisure facilities, and obviously the great people of Sheffield do require leisure facilities, and I'm more than welcome this investment. I just want a bit of clarity, though, on the Healy works. Can you just confirm what work has been completed to date and what is the current planned work?
I don't have information on Healy at the moment. I can follow that up with Capital Delivery Service.
Yeah, please, if you don't mind. That would be welcome, yeah.
Okay, I think, from memory, because Healy is an older facility, it doesn't have the same level of pool plant. So some of the other facilities, you've got things like wave machines and flumes and other things, and the pool plant is more likely to break down, and there are more significant costs associated with those venues. I think there has been a high level of cash spent at Healy in recent years, and therefore there's not the level of maintenance required as at some of the other sites. What I will do is I'll go back and get more detail on Healy and come back to you.
Okay, please, yeah. I look forward to that. Thank you.
If you can circulate that to the committee secretary, we'll get that out to body on the finance subcommittee there. Councillor Zaire Naz.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Tammy, for your presentation. It is really positive to see that level of investment going on in all these different places. My question is, is £100 million over a 30-year period, is that what you said? And secondly, just, I'm just wondering whether there's some discussions with institutions like the English Institute of Sport and I Sheffield around bringing back the slice card or having some type of discount for people who can't afford to pay the full fees? I'm just wondering whether that's something that you can have a discussion about with these groups, since we're investing quite a lot of money there. Thank you.
Okay, so on the first point, yes, it is a 30-year financial model. It's not £100 million in cash all in one go. That's not how the model works. There'll be an element of prudential borrowing upfront, which will be paid back through the revenue over a period of time. So it's not, it's not actually £100 million in one lump cash ask. So just to try and clarify that a little bit. On the slice card and the concessions, that is still actually in place. So concessions are offered across all venues for residents that receive in and out of work-related benefits. So if people are eligible to access that, they can do so, and information, I believe, is available on City Trust and Places Leisure websites about that. So that is already in place, and it's something that we would want to continue moving forwards.
Councillor Lee.
Yeah, I think councillor Otten touched on it. It was about Healy. My understanding was there was quite a lot of investment some years ago in Healy Baths. I think, was it some lottery funding, about a million quid or so that was invested? It might not have been a million, it might have been a different amount, but there was a significant investment which refurbished the interior of the baths.
Yeah, I think there has been investment at Healy. There was definitely the gym extension that was put on there, but I don't want to answer the question and not have the facts, so I'll go back and get the information and come back if that's okay.
Is there any other further questions or comments? If I can, I'll just, I notice it's on a number of things that are planned in there when we look through. There's upgrade replacements, things like ice plant and to ice pad pipe work and things like that, and a lot of things around energy and plant. Will these deliver savings? We're all extremely conscious around energy and things now, so these will all help. And I suppose it leads to the questions around protecting the revenue investment going forward, the revenue forward. Will these all contribute towards energy efficiency in some of these buildings? As you've indicated, you know, some of these now, the plant and equipment is probably reaching life expectancy, isn't it?
Yeah, I think there's a definite expectation that we will be able to generate efficiencies, whether that be just through the carbon output of the building, so putting in more environmentally friendly upgrades in terms of LEDs replacing, fluorescents, et cetera. And it will help the building and the building management systems to run more effectively and more efficiently. So it is maintenance, but it will contribute also towards efficiency of the buildings.
Okay, thank you. There's no further questions or, oh, sorry, councillor Elliot.
Sorry, just on that note, picking up from what councillor Otten asked. Is there a commitment when it comes to leisure facilities that have swimming pools to have solar panels so that they can sort of be self-sufficient in terms of energy production?
There's not a specific commitment on solar panels as such, but what we have said is that we'll undertake a piece of work to look at where we can reduce energy consumption within our facilities. So that's a piece of work that is being commissioned at the moment, and a further report will be brought on that once we've got that information. So it's definitely something that we're conscious about and will be factored into plans going forward, but there are no definite plans at this point. It'll be subject to the information that we get back from that further, more detailed work.
Thanks, Tammy.
Okay, thank you. There are recommendations on page 96, there are two recommendations there. Are we all agreed in agreement with those? Yeah? Carry unanimously. Thank you very much, Tammy. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is item 12 on page 103. The appropriation of the former Bow Hill View older person's residential home site for housing purposes. And Michael Hellywell is presenting this for us.
I'm Michael Hellywell, Service Manager for Housing Growth. It's good to be here. As you say, I'm covering item 12, which is on page 103 onwards in your pack. This report has just one recommendation. It's seeking approval for the appropriation of the former Bow Hill View older person's home for housing purposes. Just in terms of understanding where that is in the city, the Bow Hill View site, which includes the older person's home, is located on Eastfield Road, which is off Northfield Road in Crooks, within the Walkley Ward. And there's a site location plan and some details included in appendix one of the report. The site is in council ownership, and it was declared surplus in terms of its original intended use via an executive director report in 2013, and it's remained vacant and disused since that time. So the proposal is to appropriate the site, and just to cover off the terminology there, appropriation refers to a process where formal responsibility for a council asset is moved from one legal function of the council to another, and then that asset is set apart for a particular use. So in this case, the report is recommending that we transfer the site from the people portfolio to the operational services portfolio, enabling it to be used for housing purposes. The report sets out the legal basis for doing this, it sets out the requirement for an open space notice to be published, and it sets out the details of the adjustment to the financial accounts, which needs to take place upon appropriation. So consistent with the council's disposal framework, appropriation decisions are reserved to this committee, and the report sets out the rationale for that decision and also the future intentions for the site. Don't know, would the committee allow me just to say a few words on what those future intentions for the site are? Okay. So the plan is for the site to be appropriated, to develop affordable homes on the site as part of the council stock increase programme. According to the Strategic Housing Market Assessment, this is the area of the city with the largest shortfall of affordable homes, so there's that identified need for affordable houses in this area. The site is in an area where we've got limited surplus council assets, which are suitable for housing purposes, and where competition for and the cost of sites on the open market are relatively high. So it provides the opportunity to regenerate a council-owned Brownfield site, which has been surplus to operational requirements for some time. We've done some early work to look at the feasibility of developing 36 apartments on there, and based on the metrics that we use, a very, very early stage of project development, this project is looking viable, including the appropriation value that's included within the report. However, further work is required to de-risk the site and to confirm its development potential, and ultimately to confirm the cost of the project. So this includes the demolition of the existing structures on the site and further ground investigation work in order to manage some of those risks. And the majority of the funding for the stock increase programme comes from the housing revenue account, and we can't spend any further housing revenue account resources on this site until such a time that it's had been appropriated for housing purposes. So that's the reason why the decision's been brought to the committee today. It's worth just making the link back to Damien's earlier report. So, subject to members approving the recommendations in this report, we have received early on today approval to procure the demolition works via a separate contract, which will allow us to move on and kind of take the project forward in the way that I've described. Just in terms of, one final thing to note, that the progression of the project to develop council homes on the site is subject to the outcome of a planning application, as you would expect, and to further council approvals, once we know the full cost of the project through the usual capital approval process. And whilst market disposal of the site for an alternative use cannot be ruled out, that's not our preferred option as officers, and that's not the option that we're bringing forward to members. And I think that's probably all I'd want to say on that. I'll have to stake any questions.
Thank you. Councillor Chaplin.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you, Michael, for this report. It's good to see that this land is being repurposed for affordable housing, and hopefully that'll be council housing. Nine years, though. Do we know why it's taken a while to get to this point?
I can certainly answer from a-
It may not be you, but-
Yeah, I mean, from a housing perspective, at the time that the site was declared surplus, we didn't have an active stock increase programme in the way that we do now. So that would be part of the reason why it wasn't considered at the time for council homes through the stock increase programme. And initially, our focus of the stock increase programme has been on cleared housing revenue account sites, and as the stock increase programme started to gain momentum, we started to look at other council-owned sites, of which this is one. So I can't answer for the history of the site prior to that, but that's from a housing perspective.
Just a follow-up question, although slightly different. All that building material on that site, how will that be repurposed? Will that be recycled?
It will be, it'll be dealt with through a council contract, where there will be obligations on the contractor, successful contractor, to consider the environmental impact and where possible, to retain materials on site where we can do so.
Thank you. Councillor Otten.
Thank you, Chair. So you mentioned the alternative options of disposal for residential use, and you've said that's not the preferred option. I just want to ask why that's not preferred. I mean, it strikes me that if you dispose the site, you get a capital receipt, you can spend that on affordable homes somewhere else, and then you get additional kind of normal homes on that site. You're building more homes altogether, effectively. Not, obviously, the council isn't building the same number, but we're getting more homes altogether, we're doing more therefore to meet the total housing need of the city rather than just the affordable need. And we're not taking a risk on the actual development on that site. So that would seem to me, you know, it seemed to have some obvious advantages. So I'm not clear why the recommendation is that we develop this site ourselves as the council, rather than disposing of it and developing affordable homes somewhere else.
I suppose what I would say is there is significant demand for affordable housing in this area of the city. If the council is to develop this site, it has a degree of control over things such as standards and building performance and environmental performance. But what I would also say is that in order to manage the risk, whatever the outcome of this is, whatever we decide to do with this site, as I said, the preferred option is to develop council homes on that site, I think de-risking the site through that demolition activity will be beneficial. So that's part of that. I suppose it's just worth focusing members' attention to the fact that today we're asking for that permission for appropriation of the site, that allows that work to continue, and it'll be subject to a further decision once we've got the full cost of the project as to what exactly we put on the site.
Okay, I mean, thank you for that. I mean, you've not really said why that's the preferred option, although you did mention the building standards. I appreciate that point. It was in 642, wasn't it? Can you, I don't want details now, but can you send me that specification for thermal efficiency, air tightness and all that? Because I would like to see that. But yeah, if the final use is going to come to a further decision, I'm, yeah, I'm happy with this today. Thank you.
Okay, I'll certainly send that on to you and also to the wider committee as well.
I think, I think just within there, councillor Otten, 2.5 says the city's in the urban west housing market area. This is the area of the city with the largest shortfall of affordable homes, including demand for one-bed apartments. And I think that will have a substantial part of the reasoning why this site has been suggested for council housing on that site. Councillor Mohammed.
Since its closure in 2013, has this site ever been used for anything else?
I'm certainly not aware of that, but as I say, I'm here to talk to you about the appropriation, but I can certainly find that out for you. I don't know if there's other officers in the room that can answer that question without putting people on the spot. If not, I'll come back to you.
It doesn't matter. I mean, what I need you to do is, because I'm trying to establish since 2013, what the cost has been to the council of trying to maintain, not maintain, keep this site secure, et cetera. Clearly, I probably don't expect you to have the answer now, but as the Chair's indicated to a previous question about Healy Baths, maybe for you, Chair, the answer can be provided to us? So basically, since 2013, how much has it cost?
Yeah, I can certainly choose, certainly provide that, yeah.
Councillor Elliot.
Thank you for this proposal. You know, I think it's a good one, and we obviously need more affordable homes, especially in this area, and it's a good use of the site. In the report, it refers to high-quality sustainable homes and high levels of energy efficiency, and the use of renewable energy technologies will be considered. I wondered, could we have more of a commitment to install solar PV and integrate it into the build? Because, I mean, it just makes sense in terms of, you know, cheaper energy bills and is more cost-effective to do it at the build stage rather than retrofitting at a later stage.
Certainly, in terms of the current proposals that have been looked at for this site, we are looking at different methods of heat in the building. So we are looking at a range of different options, including air source heat pumps. We're doing some work to understand what the cost attendants of that might be, because I think that's an important factor as well. But yes, absolutely, we will be looking at kind of renewable energies where we can, renewable energy technology where we can in this. But obviously, it comes down to cost as well. We need the project to be viable as a HRA investment as well.
Yeah, I mean, it's my understanding, I don't know much about it, but there's probably regional sources, you know, in terms of funding, gainshare funding, things like that, that might be able to assist with.
Yeah, there is reference in the report to actually seeking to maximise the amount of external funding that we get for this and other stock increase programme projects. So yeah, where there are, where there is funding available for specific environmental upgrades, as you say, we will look into that as well as the project develops.
Don't see anybody else that's indicated. We have a recommendation on page 104 to approve that the former Bow Hill View older person's residential home site is appropriated for purposes of part two of the Housing Act. I think some of the other questions will relate more to the planning side of things when it's, the report is quite clear, this is for the appropriation of the site and bringing it into the housing use. Is that, yeah?
That's correct, yeah.
So are we all in agreement with that recommendation? Nobody opposed to it? Yep, okay, thank you, so that's carried unanimously. We'll move on to item thirteen on the agenda, which is the Sheffield Rotherick Clean Air Plan grant funding, and Ben?
Yeah, back again last time from me, you'll be glad to hear. This is largely a technical report, some of which could actually be incorporated in the previous capital programme report Damien presented, it's just a matter of timing of getting the information through, through the meeting today. Two elements to this particular set of proposals. The first is to, for the council to accept just over four million pounds from DEFRA associated with the implementation of the CAS infrastructure, the physical works associated with the CAS. When we submitted a final business case back in July, we identified a need for a further four million pounds, and that has been approved. And just to confirm, in the last line of paragraph one point through, there's two approvals subject to receipt of the terms and conditions of the award being in line with the previous ones. We did actually receive the details of the funding late last week. It mirrors previous approval, the previous funding agreement, so I'd hope we can just progress straight away in that respect. And the other element is very much a technical issue associated with existing funding, which the council has already received, associated with the financial measures. So these are the grants and loans associated with the CAS, to enable owners of vehicles to upgrade to CAS-compliant vehicles. This is simply to put some of the funding into the capital programme. It came to us as capital, so we just need to insert it into the capital programme as a technical issue, to allow us to defray the funding in a legally compliant manner.
Okay, thanks Ben. Anybody? councillor Otten.
Thanks Chair, thank you for this. So, it's two questions, I suppose. One is, I mean, is this what we were waiting, I mean, I understand at one point the council was delayed, and we were waiting on something from the government in order to, it wasn't our delay, it was theirs. Is it now, are all the delays now ours, I suppose is the question? Is it, can we, are we able to get on with this scheme and deliver it as soon as we can? The second question would be, does this, I mean, I think we're still waiting for clarity, I know taxi drivers in particular are still waiting for clarity on exactly what grant packages will be available. Does this mean we can now give them that clarity, as well as the second question?
Two related questions, I think. In terms of the final business case and confirmation from government associated with this funding, it means we can get on and put in all the infrastructure, associated with physical infrastructure, and everything associated with delivery of the CAS, the cameras, the charging, et cetera. That's now confirmed. In respect of the level of support to taxi drivers and other owners of non-compliant vehicles, we have submitted a request to government for some increased flexibility, to increase the measures. We are expecting a decision, I think it's been delayed because of the Prime Minister and putting in the appropriate new ministers to make that decision, so hopefully that can happen fairly quickly. Once we have that, we'll be able to formally make it clear what the final support measures will be, in terms of values and how they're accessed as well. But we do have an intention to get the scheme up and running in October.
Okay. Any other? Yeah, councillor.
Thanks Chair. Just a couple of clarifying points, Ben. A note on paragraph four one one, you say some of the most significant polluters are buses, taxis, and LGVs. However, in your recommendations, the second recommendation, you've actually only want us to approve the inclusion of the grant assistance to bus, coach, and HGV owners. I just want to clarify, is that correct? And if it is, why are taxi drivers and LGVs not included in that?
It is correct, it is purely a technical matter in the way the funding's arrived to the council. So, the support for taxi drivers and LGVs has come as revenue funding, and the support for buses, coaches, and HGVs has come as capital funding. We can treat them in the same way to a large degree, but just because of the nature of funding, we have to now put that capital through the capital programme. So it's just a purely technical matter.
So, so can I just confirm then, this value of six point one seven six million, that will be applicable to taxi drivers as well, or not?
That's part of the much larger package of twenty million, which we secured. So, so this, all the CAS information which has been provided to date, has referred to a twenty million pound package of support, which covered all the vehicles. This is just dealing with the six million which has arrived as part of that twenty million, it's just bringing it through the capital programme.
Okay, so, I just want to clarify this one more time. This six point one seven six million, is it applicable to taxi drivers? Yes or no?
No.
Thank you. And the four million, just to clarify, the first bullet point, the four million, is that applicable to taxi drivers? Yes or no?
No.
Thank you.
Nobody else? No? I'll just ask a question, and it's just on the back of the previous question there. Taxi operators are included within the overall grant that we've received already, so they can apply and receive funding towards conversions and making their vehicles compliant in there. So it's not excluding taxi drivers?
No, not at all. This is, as I said, this is purely a technical issue in terms of the six million pounds, which is part of the wider twenty million pound package, just to enable us to put those funds in place where it's associated with HGVs, coaches, and buses, it just needs to go through the capital programme, it's a technical issue. The twenty million package of support is in place, and is, will be available, part of that will be available to taxi drivers.
Thanks for that. I just wanted to clarify, in case there are members of the taxi trade that are watching, that they didn't misunderstand that, as if they were being excluded, so there is the support that's still in there for taxi operators. Councillor?
Thank you Chair. Sorry, it's just a clarification, same questions around the support for the taxi drivers. So it's not included in the six million that we approved today, neither in the four million, but you're saying it's part of the bigger twenty million package?
Yes, and the six million is part of that twenty million pound package. This is purely to enable that six million pounds to go, this part, six million pounds to go through the capital programme. It's purely a technical matter, the twenty million pounds has been approved, and is available for the council to make available to the various different vehicle types which are eligible for support.
So this money, you minus this, minus this from the twenty million, and ten million what's left?
There's another fourteen million, which is available to LGVs and to taxis.
And to taxis, fourteen million for taxis and LGVs, okay. Thank you.
Okay, we have-
Just working for the numbers for Gary.
Yeah. It's coming in different pots and different places, and it's a lot of the things with the finance, isn't it? So we have recommendations there on page one hundred and fourteen, two recommendations. Are we all in agreement with those recommendations?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's carried unanimously. Thank you Ben. And we'll move on to item fourteen, which is a supplementary report that we received, the disposal framework, policy on disposal of council property, and Tommy Whitaker is to present.
Hi there, my name's Tommy Whitaker, I'm the head of regeneration and property services at the City Council. The purpose of the report is to, for the committee to consider adopting a disposers framework which is attached to the report. The framework provides guidance to decision-makers around, to ensure that the council complies within the legal, financial, and statutory duties in disposing of property. And the council owns quite a large estate, which is held for a variety of purposes, and some of that's been covered in early reports today. In disposing of its land and property, the council has to comply with quite a tight legal framework, and it's important that we have clarity, openness, and transparency about decisions that are taken, in order that the council can be clear if it faces challenge on disposal of its property. There have been a number of high-profile cases recently of local authorities who have faced challenges as a result of a lack of clarity around decision-making surrounding disposals, and therefore it's important that we have a clear policy. The disposers framework that's presented here with the report builds on a previous approved twenty thirteen disposers framework, and is an updated version of that, taking account of best practice and recent case law, and also clarifying some of the areas where we needed further guidance, particularly around things like the surplus declaration process, and around disposals at less than best consideration. As a starting point, it's important to note that the council, in order to dispose of property, must declare it surplus, and secondly, the starting point is always that it must obtain best consideration in disposals. Best consideration essentially means best price. All disposals are undertaken in line with statutory powers. And just for clarification as well, disposal, legally, the terms around disposal refers to not only sales of the council's freehold interest, but also leases of greater than seven years. So just to summarise, I won't go into detail about policy, it's on the report, but essentially it covers disposal at best consideration, disposal at less than best consideration, with the clarity that this is only undertaken in exceptional circumstances, and must comply with the general disposal consent or request for Secretary of State consent for disposal at less than best consideration, and other control measures as such as subsidy control. It sets out the basis for governance, i.e. disposal decisions are primarily taken through this finance subcommittee, or the charitable trust subcommittee, where the council has charitable trust interests. It also sets out the basis or disposal methods. The kind of default position is that disposals of council property are taken to market, but it also sets out a policy around private treaty, sales, joint disposals, and special purchases. The final section deals with surplus property declaration procedure, and will cover some of the things that came up in a previous report around the decision to declare a property surplus, and how we consider then alternative uses for council use, operational use, or whether the property is declared surplus altogether, and therefore available for disposal. As a very quick counter through, there is quite a legal basis to this, but I'm happy to take any questions.
Thanks Tammy. councillor Lovery, you've indicated.
Thanks Tammy. I have a query on item five five of local area committees. It says that the very last sentence, any lack views or comments on a specific disposal should be a collective view from the lack. Does that mean that we're having a standing item on lacks for disposals? That view goes to you, does it also go to the relevant committee as well?
Yeah, so-
How will that work?
The process that we've discussed is having a list of the, using the bimonthly disposals list, and that will be circulated to lack chairs. What we wanted to be clear on there is that the views that come forward on specific disposals are the view of the lack in its entirety, rather than from an individual, because the process is that we should have a coordinated view of the lack. That make sense?
Thank you.
councillor Otten.
Thank you Chair, and thank you for, Tammy, for the report, and for drawing my attention to the issue I raised a few moments ago, in regard to the land at Bow Hill. The policy suggested is that disposal can only be considered if a property is surplus in council requirements. Now, it may be the case that, you know, the council has a good use for a piece of land, but could sell it for a nice sum, and acquire a cheaper piece of land somewhere else, and allow that to serve its use in a more cost-effective way. Does this policy prevent that? Is this policy saying that we shouldn't do that, you should use the land you've got? Or what is it saying? And therefore, how would that sort of decision end up getting made?
Yeah, so, you're quite correct. So, no, it doesn't prevent that happening, and you'll note at the beginning of the report, it says that we should take, we're adopting a corporate landlord approach in terms of managing our estate, so all decisions are taken in the best interests of the council as a corporate entity, rather than for services individually. So therefore, we need to make sure that in assessing what we do with our land, we take on board a whole host of factors. So, in a scenario, for example, where we have, it needs to reflect service needs, so effectively, if a service could be delivered better from a different location, we shouldn't just be holding land because that service, because we've got that land. We need to reflect what the best use of that land is, but also what the best outcome is for our customers and for services. So if we can acquire better property, in a better location for delivery of a service, we should do that, and release other land to enable that to happen.
Okay, thank you, I think, yeah, I think that's a clear, clear and acceptable answer. Yeah, so the, I mean, I guess the question is, I mean, thank you for the report, is it still processed? I mean, I do wonder if there is a review of, an estate review coming, that will therefore bring us a number of disposals down the line for us to consider?
Yeah, there is. So at the moment, there's an accommodation review underway, and so we're looking at our operational property. It's a major task, I would say, that, and so therefore, it will be quite focused initially, in terms of looking at what the scope of that accommodation review is, but that will be brought forward for discussion at future point, and will result in some disposals, yes.
Okay, councillor Lovery, you've indicated again.
Yeah, just on the back of that, Tammy. Are we going to do a review of waste, waste collection sites across the city, which some of them are in very poor condition, and struggling to maintain the service? Will that get wrapped up into this, in terms of disposable sites, and looking at potentially better sites than some of those that we've currently got?
You mean the household waste recovery sites? It's currently not in scope of the existing review, but I know that that's something I've been discussing with the service manager for some time, so it is on the radar, but there are some specifics that we need to get through first, but yes, we will, subject to resources, we'll pick that up.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? See councillor Otten looking there, thinking, keep your hands off my household waste recycling centres there. Put a few words going between them over there. We have the recommendations on page two of the supplementary pack. Is everybody in agreement with the recommendations? Yeah? Nobody dissent? No? Okay, so that's approved unanimously, sorry unanimously. Thank you Tammy. We'll move on to item fifteen, substance misuse services. Turn on mid page, sorry. And is this Amy that's presenting?
No, it's Jo Horrabin.
Oh, sorry Jo.
That's quite okay.
Apologies.
Jo Horrabin, Director of Integrated Commissioning. So I'm bringing the report today, with the, to seek approval for spending the new supplemental substance misuse treatment and recovery grant, and to seek approval to accept and spend the rough sleeper drug and alcohol treatment grant. Just by way of introduction to those grants, the council is the lead commissioner in the city for drug and alcohol treatment and recovery services, which fall under the council's public health statutory duties. Services are funded via that public health grant, with a contribution as well from the Office of Police and Crime Commissioner. The Office of Health Improvements and Disparities, OHED, have made additional funding available in order to support local authorities to achieve the aims of the new national drug strategy, called From Harm To Hope, that it was, that was published in December twenty twenty one, and followed on from Dame Carol Black's review. The, the funding is for several purposes, two purposes in particular, to increase capacity and improve the quality of the substance misuse treatment and recovery grant. And we're asking the committee to endorse the planned interventions, and approve the outlined commissioning strategies and grant awards, in order to establish, and the establishment, sorry, of the enhanced recovery support grant. I'm very happy to take questions, it's a very long report, there's a lot of detail in the appendices, but I think probably it's reasonably straightforward in that we are requesting to accept and spend the additional supplementary monies of eight point four million for substance misuse, and the additional almost one million for support and for rough sleepers and substance abuse. supplementary monies of 8.4 million for substance misuse and the additional, almost 1 million for support and for rough sleepers and substance abuse.
Thank you. Anybody got any questions? Councillor Lee?
Yeah, what is the total budget now with this 8.4 million? What will that be roughly?
Sorry, I realised you were going to ask me that. I will have to get back and confirm that to you.
Yeah, and on page 25 it talks about the local adult substance misuse services currently with a commission, within a commission capacity. Who is that with at the moment?
So currently the substance misuse service is with Sheffield Health and Social Care Trust.
So will they be, so will, most of this will be grants out to tender? Will they, will be able to tender for the, or...
Absolutely, yeah.
For the existing work that they do?
Yeah, we will need to follow the route to market in line with procurement requirements and absolutely that may involve an open tender process.
So the work that they do at the moment, that will go out to tender as well?
We're currently in the process of getting advice on whether we need to go to the open market or whether this can be managed within the existing contract. The challenge we have is that in procurement terms, this is a significant amount of additional monies coming to the local authority and that requires us to tender that work. Clearly we have an incumbent provider and we therefore need to take advice and work with the incumbent provider in order to make sure that the council manages any risks in relation to procurement regulations and requirements.
Yeah, I mean, just looking through some of the interventions that are named, it wouldn't be something that you would, I would see some of those services going out to maybe the voluntary sector or a social enterprise or some such body, but then there's somewhere that you would expect health to be particularly concerned about and have an input in as well?
Absolutely, and as you rightly described, there are a broad range of interventions outlined in the report and we would expect that we may well see a mixed economy of provision of provider, potentially even a consortium that would be able to come together in order to deliver on that.
Because I'm particularly thinking many people with drug and alcohol problems also have mental health problems either that precede their alcohol and drug problems or are a result of it and very intractable and would need specialist help as well as help with the abuse problems which sometimes can be done by other bodies other than the health service.
Absolutely, and one of the strands of our proposal is an improvement and expansion of the integration of mental health and physical health with drug treatment services.
Okay. Any other further questions or comments? No? We have the recommendations there. Sorry, lost my page. I'll catch up. Which chapter is this, isn't it? Page 22, thank you. We have the recommendations there on page 22. Are we all in agreement with the recommendations? Anybody dissent? No, so that's unanimous. Thank you very much. And then we now move on to item 16. Which is the additional home care to support hospital discharge. Sorry. It was late, it me circulated this report. It was issued yesterday, I understand. Sorry, councillor Lowery, you just indicated, is that after reports? Is it a question that you, right, sorry. Thank you Alexis, if you want to present the report.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to present the report today and also to approach the trusty so that there's no question. What the report is, oh sorry. What the report is, is a request for the finance subcommittee to accept funding from NHS, the tune of 2.4 million to support additional support, to bring in additional home care to the city to support the safe and timely discharge of individuals from hospital. It's been done as a collaboration through, with colleagues in Sheffield Teaching Hospital and also with colleagues in the new ICB as a way to very much support us, to work very much in partnership together so that we can enable people to come home when they're well from hospital, which is what often people say is really important to them. And the reason for the delay in the report was partly due to, I think, some leaving, some technical issues around the recommendations around this. But ultimately, what we aim to do through the accepting of the funds is to establish a grant fund to essentially, to enable us to go and provide the funding to providers of home care in the city on a grant basis. And secondly, to implement a coordination group who will ensure that we satisfy and meet the terms of the requirements of the funding and support and improvement in discharge across the city. And third, to go and essentially ensure we've got appropriate models and pathways in place which makes us a success, the additional funding that we have gotten and enables us to go and deal with this through the appropriate governance mechanisms. And finally, we've got some key kind of project milestones. If the funding is approved from committee today, then essentially what we aim to do is tomorrow to launch a grant fund and to commence recruitment process of social care staff to support the additional home care support and then equally go and take forward implementation of the project group to take this forward with officers across from the council and NHS as a collective together. All in all, I'm very proud to be here to present this because it's very much part of our change programme and some of the ambitious strategies that we set out to go and not only build positive relationships with NHS but also to go and, you know, as was highlighted earlier on, is to work with NHS so that we have additional funding in from NHS to support us to deliver improved outcomes for people in the city. So it helps us to take that forward together. So that's what we're seeing. We'll go for questions.
Thank you. Anybody, any questions? Mike, councillor Lowery?
Thank you Alexis. I note a couple of things in the report under the purpose that the new funding is to enable the safe and timely provision of discharge from hospital, the reduction of 40 beds on average per month. And secondly, that the funding is there until March 23. One presumes that means that the hospitals will want to maintain that 40 bed reduction beyond there. How does that impact on our finances for adult social care beyond March next year? And these resources which we're taking on to do it, will they continue? What's the plan? Thank you.
So it's a very, very good question. The funding is temporary until March 23 and the staff will be temporary. What this does is runs in tandem though with the wider home care transformation programme that we have in place in the city and it's helpful to know that we received approval for the, at the Adult Social Care Committee on 15th of June to recommission home care services and that work will be completed by June next year. So what's anticipated is as this ends, what we'll go into is the new model of home care delivery which should enable us to go and create more sustainable home care services in the future, which is always the backdrop to discharge ultimately. And also in tandem with this, which I know councillor Mary Lee will ask, is around also the work that we're doing to right-size home care support and also to, you know, increase home care capacity across the city through additional reviews, because ultimately these things also go in tandem with the additional funding. The aim of this is ultimately, though it's temporary funding, is that if we can demonstrate this works, then absolutely I will always go and make the plea to NHS to continue funding. You know, and I think the key thing is, is that for me, this is a step forward in the right direction. It shows the commitment from NHS colleagues to supporting a test of change and a different way of working and I think it's truly incumbent upon us and NHS colleagues to work together so that, and so that we can make this a success and hopefully make this something that's a bit more long term and support ultimately the funding of the council as well.
So in terms of finances, won't it impact on next year's budget for adult social care?
No.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Any further questions or comments? Councillor Lee?
Very welcome and I'm sure once we'll implement this, then it will be certainly helping the longer on to deal with all the issues we've got and the demand that's going to rise inevitably as we go on.
Thank you. I'd just like to add a comment, say, well done in negotiating with NHS England to actually get some funding out from them to come and help support the delivery service in Sheffield. And as has been said there, you know, if this helps improve the delivery services going forward, then that's got to be good news and the closer working with NHS as we see the problems that we're facing with social care across the city and funding, this has got to be good news for Sheffield, so well done. Colleagues, we have the recommendations that are there on page two of this report. Are we all in agreement with those? Yeah, agreed, no dissent. Thank you very much, that's carried unanimously. The last thing on the agenda is the date and time of the next meeting, which is down for the 7th of November. Just before we go, I think this will be the last meeting that Gillian will be with us as the director of legal governance for the finance subcommittee, so thank you very much Gillian for your help and support that you've given us through here and, should I say, good luck in your new job, best of luck in your new job, deserting us and running away, but there you go. So thank you very much Gillian. And that's it colleagues, that's the end of the meeting. Thank you very much.